Fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Bowling Green Warren County Planning Commission. McKinnon, if you would call the roll, please.
Commissioner Drane. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Here.
Commissioner Volker. And Chair Warren.
Yes. Commissioners, you have the minutes of our June the first meeting in your packets. Are there any questions regarding those minutes? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion, please. Second.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
I abstain.
Commissioner Starks.
Thank you.
And Chair Warren.
Ma'am. Commissioners, you have the subdivision site development plans in your packets that were mailed to you. Are there any questions? All right. Ben, do we have any old business? No old business. We will get ready to go into our public hearing tonight. Counselor Moore, would you administer the oath, please?
I will, thank you. Mr. Martin, I request that you order that the record tonight include all of the relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket, and the qualifications for each staff witness. Finally, I request that you administer the oath to those witnesses.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all very much. All right, our first public hearing tonight is twenty twenty-three thirty ZBG MNM LLC. Care of Matt Fuqua has filed an application to rezone approximately four tenths of an acre located zero University Drive, formerly five seventeen University Drive from RS one A to RS one D with a general development plan. Amy? If you would pull your mic down. All right.
Great. We had a pre-application meeting on November the seventeenth of twenty twenty-two for the property that you mentioned, and that is highlighted in red. The current zoning is RS one A. Current land use is vacant, and the future land use is moderate density residential. And again, the applicants are proposing to rezone properties on University Drive from RS one A to RS one D in order to subdivide the property into two building lots. And the site plan can be found on page seven of your packet for reference. Looking down at the property history there at the very bottom, this body approved a flume amendment to moderate density residential in May of twenty twenty-three. Just to bring that up for your reference there. And staff recommendation is approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion of the following. The proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. That's all we have for the staff report, but can answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions? Rami?
Quick, is this the one that had two deeds and? Okay, I remember, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Is the applicant here any comments they would like to make or their representative?
Chair Warren, good evening. Chris Davenport, nine twenty-one College Street. I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
I don't really have anything more to add. Happy to answer any questions. This was the flume, Commissioner Graham, that we talked about about a month ago. So this would be two single-family homes. I would only note that we don't, the staff report doesn't mention any points to discuss or any policies out of compliance. So I'm happy to add anything y'all might want to ask for.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Davenport? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the opposite, in the audience tonight that has questions or opposition to this request? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, we call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number twenty twenty-three thirty ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes.
Commissioner Drane. And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved, and we'll go to the Bowling Green City Commission for final approval. I think our next is our applicant here. Our next case tonight, the applicant is on.
But Chris is here.
Will that be okay?
I've got a phone call from my client, Commissioner Warren. I was just maybe bumping that to the end of the docket. I'm not sure why he's trying to call me unless the staff has gotten.
He's forty-five minutes or so away.
So Rachel, can, can Mr. Davenport represent?
I think it would be better to wait if that places you down.
We do that, Ben? Okay. We, we will move item number two, number two to at the end of the meeting. Our next item tonight is twenty twenty-three thirty-five Z County. Sweeney Property LLC, care of Ralph Fesh Patel, has filed an application to rezone approximately four point four nine acres located zero in one one nine Sweeney Lay from Sweeney Way, Lane from ag to highway business with a general development plan.
Thank you, Commissioner Chair. We had a pre-application meeting back in December for the properties over on Sweeney Lane. The current zoning of the properties is ag. The current land use is single-family residential and vacant. And then the future land use designation was recently changed to commercial in May. There is their site plan for your reference. Looking down to the bottom of page one, the proposal does comply with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. And staff's recommendation for this is approval pending any public hearing testimony and discussion of the following. That's all the staff have, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Regarding recreational building.
Mm-hmm.
What, exactly what is that? What will that consist of?
So that may be best answered by the applicants, but looking over to their DPCs, I don't know that they specifically define recreational. I think that they just wanted to prohibit specific uses, and that's kind of the limit of that.
Multi-purpose, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starks. Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, Jenny. All right, is the applicant here or their representative?
Mr. Davenport, again, to answer your question, Commissioner Starks, the plan for that back building is a gymnasium, a meeting rooms, kind of a, if you've been, multi-purpose event center, meeting rooms and that kind of thing. So this was also on your flume agenda last month. So kind of like with the last application, I don't have anything more to add. I'm happy to answer any other questions y'all might have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Davenport? Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question regarding this proposal or opposition? Yes, ma'am, if one of, or either one of you would come to the microphone, please. Yes, ma'am, if you would state your name and address, please.
My name is Lisa Rollon, and I'm at five five six Sweeney Lane.
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much. And your question, please?
It's not a question. Sweeney Lane is a dead-end road, and it's very narrow. Two cars cannot pass. So if someone's coming the other way, you have to pull off the road. In that guard rail there, you have to look across the guard rail to make sure there, because you can't, you can't get over where the guard rail is. You have to make sure there's no one coming the other way where the guard rail is. If the school bus comes, you have to pull off completely into someone else's yard. And then any traffic coming that does not know that that's a dead-end street, they have to turn around and my driveway, I have a circular drive, I have to block that off. So you're talking about people letting out of this group, convention center, whatever it is. At the light there, you cannot turn left. The, the traffic is so bad, you cannot turn left. You have to wait for that light to stop, and then you have the traffic coming off the interstate because there's not a light at Sweeney Lane. So you have to go turn right, go down to the, get one of the gas stations, and turn around to come back to go left. So you're talking about that meeting letting out even just ten cars. You, you would not be able to get out at all. It would, it would make it impossible. Even on our street, if one person is in, is in front of you turning left and they, and they're trying to wait on the traffic, it takes forever. And you cannot turn, go around them to the right because it's, I mean, and go right around them. You would have to sit there and wait. So you're talking about this convention center letting out. They can't go down our dead-end road. I, I don't, I just don't know how that's going to be possible.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am, if you would come to the microphone, please. Yes, ma'am.
My name's Alice Howard, seven seven five Sweeney Lane. I swear to tell the truth. I'm at the very end of the dead-end road, and there's four properties at the end. In Sweeney Lane, the blacktop ends, we have a gate where it dead-ends into a gravel drive. There's nowhere to turn around. It does not loop. It's not a cul-de-sac. It just dead-ends. So people will have, and you can't tell at the beginning of the road or in the middle of the road that it's going to dead-end. People have to pull off into the field. If it is wet or marshy, they get stuck. And it is a tiny, tiny, one-vehicle lane road. If the garbage truck, there are banks on both sides. If the garbage truck goes through, if a service vehicle goes through, you have to pull off into either the grass or you have to pull off into someone's drive. It is very tiny. It is not a well-maintained road. There is no division of lane. It is a tiny one-lane road. The guard, there are many places where you cannot see if another vehicle is coming due to the way the, the little tiny county road is. Also, we do not have very good infrastructure on this road. In two thousand and one, we exchanged a single-wide trailer for our house. And we debated with planning and zoning for many months before we were allowed to do that. We did not add any additional utilities or anything. We used the current utilities to do that. And we were told at that time that if on Sweeney Lane, one more building went in on Sweeney Lane, that new infrastructure, the water line would have to be increased, that the road would need to be improved, that another fire hydrant would have to go in, that there would need to be a lot of things changed on Sweeney Lane and improved. Well, since our house has gone in, there have been six more houses. Some of them were trailers, some were double-whits, but there were two large houses. There have been two houses renovated since then and made larger. And nothing, nothing has been improved. The water line has not been improved. There have been no additional fire hydrants. And this is a tiny one-lane road. And I am very concerned if a fire truck needs to come out to us, if any emergency vehicle. There are several of us that are disabled or would need emergency services. And it would be almost impossible if one of these events were going on and people were trying to get out and somebody else coming in. It would be very hard. The school bus comes all the way out there three times a day. How is that going to navigate? Because it's hard, just as things are. Delivery services.
Okay, yes, ma'am. We've got three minutes, so thank you.
It's hard.
We're not trying to cut you off, but thank you for your comments.
I understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, we have Pike has major lines out there. There's also a cell tower that has to be serviced out that way. So those are things to consider.
Thank you very much. I think in our staff report, on page four, the traffic study, would you mind covering that, please?
So looking over onto page four of the report, and I know you all don't have it, but I don't mind to give it to you all for to look at as well. They've all, KYTC BG, Bowling Green Public Works, and then Warren County Public Works have reviewed the proposal. A traffic impact study was not required for the development. They required that the development would not be served by more than two access points to try and mitigate that impact on Sweeney Lane. And they've also required that the developer widen Sweeney Lane to the furthest access point to try and mitigate that as well. And then I think there were also concerns about fire protection and fire hydrants. That's on page two. There will be a requirement that they install additional fire hydrants as well.
So on page four, the developer shall widen Sweeney Lane from Russellville Road to the furthest access point from Russellville Road to specifications required by the city of Bowling Green Public Works. So the road will be widened. Am I saying that correctly? Well, it, it, they, the developer is meeting the requirements, and the comments you made about what was said in the past, that it looks like they're trying to address this with this recommendation. So. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that has a question regarding this proposal? So hearing none, we call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number twenty twenty-three thirty-five Z CO. Based on the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliances with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion to include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved and goes to the Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Our next item tonight is twenty twenty-three forty-one ZBG Auto Zone Development LLC, care of Carl E. Hilton and Scotty's Development Company LLC. The owner has filed an application to rezone approximately one point six four five acres located at zero Louisville Road, zero Brenner Street from HI Heavy Industrial to Highway Business with a general development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You have a, the applicants did provide a Focus twenty-three comprehensive plan, flume statement of compliance narrative, and those can be found at your chair to go along with the application supplemental. So we had a pre-app meeting on May the first of this year for the property that you mentioned. Current zoning is, is heavy industrial. The current land use is vacant, and the future land use is commercial. Again, the applicants are applying to rezone there at Louisville Road and Brenner Street from Heavy Industrial to Highway Business in order to develop the property with an Auto Zone retail store there. And the site plan can be paged on, found on page six of your packets. And looking down at the very bottom of the page, staff recommendation is approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion of the following. The proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any questions regarding this proposal? All right, thank you. Is the applicant or their representative here any comments they would like to make, please? Yes, sir. Your name and address, please, sir?
Jason Hall, Prism Engineering, twenty-three oh nine Waterson Trail, Louisville, Kentucky, four zero two nine nine.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Do you have any other comments? We, we received your future land use map additions to this. Any other comments you would like to make to this?
We, we agree with staff's analysis of the, of the case, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you driving down from Louisville.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a comment or opposition to this request? All right, hearing none, we call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon the general development plan, docket number twenty twenty-three forty-one ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comp plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Drane. Yes. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved and goes to the Bowling Green City Commission for final approval. Our next item tonight is JAB Holdings. Is that the correct order?
Hey, Dean, ask a question. Could we go back and do the Oliver and Hansbrough? If he sent a message for Chris to handle because he's not going to make it, then I'll be leaving.
Is that agreeable? Mr. Peterson? Okay, all right. Item number two, Oliver and Hansbrough Development Partners LLC, care of Darryl Oliver and Ben Hansbrough, Benjamin Hansbrough, has filed an application to rezone approximately three point one six acres located at zero Karen Simpson Road from ag to RE Residential State with a general development plan. Rachel?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in April for the property you just referenced on Karen Simpson Road. The applicants are proposing to rezone the property from ag to RE in order to create three building lots. The aerial view is included in your packet for reference. And then the zoning is ag, and the current land use is vacant. And my apologies, on the map, it should be world, or sorry, low-density residential. You all amended the future land use map back in May for this same property. So I will take the blame for the map error there. But going back to the site plan here, I'll go through the rest of the staff report. The staff is recommending approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion of a couple of items. We did find that the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the area. We have noted considerations related to the proposed minimum home size and percentage of vinyl plan to be utilized. Those items are outlined on page three of your staff report. You'll see under the surrounding architectural features that within a quarter mile of the property in Warren County along and south of WG Tally Road to the county line, that the median home size is seventeen hundred and sixty-five square feet. And the applicants are proposing a minimum home size of sixteen hundred square feet. And then the proposed home size also appears to be less than the square footage for a majority of the homes in the adjacent Cornerstone Point subdivision. This subdivision is actually in Allen County. But if we go back to the aerial view, you can see those homes there. And so we just estimated the square footage of those homes based off of measuring from the aerial view. And then looking at the building materials review on page three, within a quarter of a mile in Warren County, roughly sixty-five percent of homes are brick with brick foundations. And then we've also looked at the homes in the Cornerstone Point subdivision. Many of those have vinyl exteriors. But in looking at the homes on Cornerstone Drive, which would be that street that backs up to this property, we found that fifty percent of the existing homes on Cornerstone Drive incorporate brick, stone, or shake siding as an accent material on the front facade. Staff suggested imposing a minimum percentage of non-vineal that would be complementary to these homes. However, this was left unaddressed by the applicants. I believe that is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, Rachel, they haven't agreed to any percentage of vinyl? Is that?
As proposed currently, if you look in development plan condition five on page three, they've outlined several potential materials, but they've not limited the amount of vinyl that can be utilized on each of them.
As a percentage?
Correct.
So using the current wording, they could do a hundred percent vinyl, correct?
Yes.
And didn't we, this one came to us for a flume as well?
It's back in May. And I believe the same topic was brought up then, and I think there was discussion about, well, that you all would have another opportunity to review it at the zone change. So here we are.
All right, commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Hurt? Thank you very much. Is the applicant or their representative here? So, Chris, you are representing Mr. Hansbrough.
And Mr. Oliver has sent me a text. Mr. Oliver sent me a text and first of all, wanted to apologize. He's hung up somewhere and told me to go ahead. And I had his authority to do whatever I needed to do. Let's just put it that way. So when we were here on the flume in May, thi- this topic did come up, primarily the facade materials. And there was also some discussion, a little bit of discussion about Karen Simpson Road. We didn't really talk about that much either. But one of the DPCs says that Karen Simpson Road will be closed. If you remember, there was some neighbors that talked about, I guess, cutting, using that as a cut-through to somewhere. Warren County Public Works really wants to close it. They wanted to close it even without this development. So when we had the, the initial meetings, they said, why don't you agree to close it? So it's in the condition. So let's talk about the exterior facade materials. So Darryl, Mr. Oliver has provided, he's built, I think this body's probably aware, he's done quite a bit of construction in this area. This is, I think, the fourth application I've brought for Mr. Oliver and/or Mr. Hansbrough in this area. This is really the last gap filler. This is three lots. So they didn't, they have asked that I stick with the allowance of the vinyl. And their, their basis for that, Mr. Oliver's basis for it's a couple of things. Number one, the staff has given you the percentage of the Warren County buildings. This, this property basically is on the Allen County line. If you didn't have the county map, you, you couldn't, I mean, it's just, there, there are homes on both sides of the county line. So I think if I understood the staff report and what Rachel said, sixty-five percent of the Warren County homes are brick. Is that right? I would just tell you that means thirty-five percent are vinyl, okay, by my simple math. And the point I would make is this is, these are three homes. This is not a fifty or sixty or a hundred or two hundred unit development where you would have some concern of all of that being vinyl and maybe the aesthetics of that. These are three lots that are, that are basically infilling current construction that has, I don't know what the Allen County numbers are. Do you know those, Rachel?
We drove out there and inventoried the homes on the Cornerstone Drive section, and fifty percent of those homes incorporate brick, stone, or shake siding as an accent material on the front facade.
Those are probably what I have some pictures of. I don't know if you all want to see them, but the, the accents are, I would say, pretty modern. The vast majority, when, when you talk about accents, the vast majority of the home, of the rest of the homes are vinyl. So that, that's kind of Darryl's take on it. Again, this is not a, a very large development. These are three lots. And there are three lots that exist, maybe not a majority of the homes aren't vinyl, but a significant portion of the existing homes are.
So, Chris, would your client be willing to match the sixty-five percent of the existing homes in, in the area?
So make sure that we're using these percentages correctly. What I take sixty-five percent to me is not that sixty-five percent of each home's existing facade is brick. I think what staff is saying is of all the homes out there, sixty-five percent of those homes have brick, which means thirty-five percent of them have vinyl.
And Rachel, you're saying that fifty percent of the homes that it sits in front of or behind are half vinyl, half brick?
No, the, the homes in the subdivision in Allen County, they do use vinyl as the primary exterior material. But then fifty percent of those on the front facade had used some other type of modern material as an accent, whether that be maybe the front porch under the, you know, under the
Yeah, okay.
awning is stone, or, or they may have shake siding up in the
Gotcha, okay.
Which would mean fifty percent of those homes do not have those non-vineal accents.
So let's do this, Chris. I recall this one from the
So let's do this, Chris. I recall this one from the flume change. There were two issues. One was exterior materials and one was the square footage. Would your client be willing to do, let's address them separately. I think it's fair to just do an accent on the front facade if you did some percentage of that. Would you?
I was prepared, now that I completely understand the point about the accents, because I didn't, I didn't quite get that. I was prepared, and I am prepared, to offer a DPC on these three homes that say they will offer on the front facade an accent material that's not vinyl. And so I think that would match the higher end of the fifty percent of the higher end across the street. Yeah.
I think the sixteen hundred square feet is fine.
Was it originally fourteen hundred square feet?
No, it says sixteen hundred.
Okay.
I think that's fine.
So if you do the, so you would address, what percentage on the front facade?
I would suggest is, if I can get the right DPC here.
Instead of doing a percentage, because I don't think Rachel, she was just saying fifty percent of the houses have it.
Have something. I would suggest
I was just saying, as long as each house has some kind of accent other than vinyl.
If it's a gable, or if it's a porch, or if it's a, whatever it is, but you're probably gonna have to add some sort of percentage to cover yourself because you can't define gables and et cetera. So what was your proposal, Chris?
I was just gonna propose that we add a sentence on number five that say, that says each front facade shall include an accent material other than vinyl, period.
And not a percentage, okay. I could do that, yeah.
I think that matches the higher fifty percent across the street. All three. All three will have that.
I have a question, Chris. When you say other than vinyl, that could consist of what in your mind?
It has to consist of the materials that are allowed.
Okay.
So the allowed materials would be brick, stone, drive it, LP smart siding, cement-based siding, man-made stone, or other modern masonry materials.
Those items listed in five, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Right. Commissioners, thank you, Mr. Davenport. Any other questions before you sit down? Any other questions? All right, thank you. Is, we'll call you back up in just a minute, Chris. Is there anyone in the audience tonight has a question or opposition to this request? Yes, ma'am, if you would come to the microphone, please. If you would state your name and address, please.
Millie Malone, ten Cornerstone Drive.
Yes, ma'am. Swear, tell the truth.
I do.
Thank you, Ms. Malone.
I'm at the corner, right there at the bottom, so I'm right there at Karen Simpson, and I see the proposal for the closure to be on the Warren County side. I don't understand if all these houses are going to be in Warren County, why would they not close the Allen County? We have so much traffic going up and down that Karen Simpson Road that is a one-single-lane road, and it's just gonna cause more issues. I don't understand why Allen County would not be closed.
Because of jurisdictional thing, isn't it?
Yeah, that's not a power that Warren County would have. That would have to come from Allen County.
You'd have to make that request in Allen. We only have the
Warren County cannot close an Allen County entrance.
Okay, so we're still gonna have to deal with, my, I guess my biggest issue is at the end of this section, you got a bank and a hill. So a single-lane road with a bank and a hill, and you have people flying down there, and they think that the road's still open because there's constantly three, four o'clock in the morning. I'm right there at the corner, so I hear it. And people are gonna fly down there, and they're gonna run into a dead end, and they're gonna have to try to figure out where and how to turn around. Either somebody's driveway or on a bank. So in reality, and I did talk to Darryl the other day about it, and he did say, my understanding, they were gonna close Warren, or Allen County. But I don't know. That's why I'm here, to discuss.
I would have maybe another discussion with Darryl
Okay.
and to see if he can talk to Allen County.
Okay, yeah, because I mean, I just see more traffic, more problems, especially for the people that are gonna buy that last property. It's just gonna cause so much, I mean, we have trucks and trailers and dump trucks flying down that road for absolutely no reason. It's a single little lane road that shouldn't have much traffic.
Thank you so much for your comments. Yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else in the audience tonight that has a question or a comment regarding this proposal? All right. Hearing none, Commissioners would call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon the general development plan docket number 202333ZCO. Based on the testimony and documents presented in the public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion to include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Drane. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved and goes to Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. Our next item tonight is 202342Z County, JAB Holdings LLC, care of Jody Allen, has filed an application to rezone approximately seventy-one point four acres located zero Plano Rich Pond Road from Ag to RE Residential State with a general development plan. Ms. Hurt?
Commissioner, Dean, I have to leave because of my involvement in this.
I'm sorry.
I have to recuse myself because of my involvement.
Thank you.
Bear with me here. Just gotta skip through a few slides. Okay, here we are. All right, so we had a pre-application meeting back in April for this property located on Plano Rich Pond Road. The applicants have applied to rezone the property from Ag to RE in order to develop a maximum of sixty-five building lots. The current zoning is agriculture, and the current land use is also agriculture. And the future land use designation for this property is rural density residential. Go back to the site plan here. You'll see at the bottom of page one, staff has recommended approval pending the public hearing testimony and discussion of a couple of items. The first is that the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. Staff has noted considerations regarding loss of prime farmland, the proposed front building setback along Plano Rich Pond Road, and facade variation among the proposed homes. So I'm gonna touch on those few things. The first on page two, the staff has noted that the property is designated as prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. On page three, looking at the front setback, the existing structures on the adjacent properties that are located on the same side of Plano Rich Pond Road are setback roughly one hundred feet from the front property line. Staff recommended that the applicants consider a similar requirement for lots fronting Plano Road, or sorry, fronting Plano Rich Pond Road, but the applicants communicated to staff that they did not wish to impose a greater setback as this would likely eliminate four of the proposed lots nearest Plano Rich Pond Road. And then the last item for your consideration is on page four, and that's in reference to one of the Plano Focal Point Plan policies, policy PL-9. There's a recommendation in that policy for facade variation among homes in the same block. And in the development plan conditions, the applicants have stated in DPC four that they have encouraged facade variation among homes in the same block, but there is no requirement that they actually do that. So I believe those are all of our items we wanted to touch on for your review, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Question. Has the applicant responded to all the concerns that the staff had regarding this proposal?
Yes, they did. They did respond. For example, on page three, we had discussed the front setback, and then they just simply communicated that they didn't want to address that. They may speak more to that in a minute. And then on the policy, that was our suggestion, suggestion on PL nine that they addressed that policy. And their, I guess, their response to that was to include the last sentence in DPC four, facade variation among homes is encouraged. But again, that would not make it a requirement.
Thank you.
So Rachel, help me understand, and I'm looking at DPC four. It says no more than thirty percent of the residents within the development encompassing ten lots or more should have a front facade of one hundred percent vinyl. Tell me, I'm not sure I follow that.
So I think the policy, the facade variation is more about the home plan that's selected and what the appearance of the front of the home looks like, so that you wouldn't have the same building plan six homes in a row to where the elevation of the front of the home would actually appear different.
They seem to also be suggesting that no more than thirty percent of that group of homes could be one hundred percent vinyl.
Yes, and they did agree to that.
Okay, so let's go back now and help me understand, what is that group of homes? This group of ten homes that we're referring to, are they on the same block, or what are we?
So the ten-home number comes from the policy. It's just saying that in the Plano Focal Point Plan, if you have subdivisions containing ten or more lots, that that's the recommendation. So if you had a proposal for five lots, we wouldn't even review that policy.
So this clearly has more than ten lots, or am I not, am I not understanding?
It does have more than ten lots.
Does DPC four say that they will have thirty percent of the residences with a front facade, no more than thirty percent of the residences with a front facade of vinyl?
So no, no more than thirty percent of the sixty-five lots would have one hundred percent vinyl.
Okay.
I think what you're trying to accomplish, Mr. Graham, is correct. In effect, you're saying, why not just delete the phrase encompassing ten lots or more?
That's what's drawing me off.
We've got ten lots or more.
Yeah, yeah, we meet that criteria, so, okay, so if that's the case, then did they, did they address that concern of? So that's everything except the setbacks, correct? Or is there another issue?
There's still the variation between the facades of the homes, so that you wouldn't repeat the same elevation, for example, three homes in a row or four homes in a row.
Got it, okay, and so
And that's recommended in their development plan condition, but it's not required.
Got it, okay, so we'll talk to the developer about that. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Commissioners, any other questions? All right, is the applicant or their representative here?
I'm sorry.
Hamp, before I forget, did we, on the last case, the Oliver, did we agree, did Mr. Davenport agree to those changes? I think, he did, okay.
I had my client's authority to do that.
Okay, yeah, just make sure. Thank you, Chris.
Chris Davenport, again, here on behalf of Mr. Allen and Mr. Volker. And they have asked the last few days for me to assist in this tonight, so I was happy to do so. I was not involved earlier on, so we've got really three issues that I do want to address. I want to clean one up, and then I want to explain why they're written the way they are. So when you look at DPC number four, though, that is verbatim taken. The applicant took that verbatim out of the Plano Focal Point. And it is, you know, my first reaction was, why don't we just get rid of the ten lot language? We could do that, but I will remind this board that when this gets rezoned, they don't necessarily have to build sixty-five homes. Now, there's, you know, they intend to do that. The idea that they would build less than ten homes on this development is kind of absurd. So with that understanding, we can certainly get rid of the encompassing ten lots or more. And that cleans that up. And it makes it much easier to read, I agree. With regard to the last sentence, that's also taking verbatim out of the Plano Focal Point. And it is a little different because the focal point encourages it. But to give you a DPC that the permitting folks can enforce, I've talked to Mr. Allen, and he'll come up and agree to this, let's change the last sentence to front facades shall be varied among homes in the same block, period. Because a permitting officer cannot enforce encouragement. I guess they can give it. I don't know if they would listen to it. That leaves the setback issue. So when I got the staff's report late last week and I was reading it, I obviously noticed a setback issue. Rodney McGay, he's the engineer here. First question I had to Rodney was, what can we do with the setbacks? Front setbacks in RE lots, I believe, is twenty-five feet. Staff is saying there are existing homes along the road that are a hundred feet. So the first question I had for Rod is, can we, can we increase that some? And really, the answer is no, and the reason it's no, you know, the applicant had told the staff that they didn't want to lose lots. I understand that, but they've also got some topography issues. And not only topography issues, but you can see, is the laser pointer here somewhere handy? Thank you. You've also got a considerable overhead utility easement that goes across the development and affects some of these frontage lots. And what Rodney tells me is there are significant drop-offs towards the rear that run kind of basically parallel to the road. So you start pushing homes back, the topography's not really consistent with that, the easement for the overhead line's not consistent with that. And really, to be honest, when I look at this development, typically when we talk about front setbacks, the concerns are, you're not building your home way out in front of your existing neighbors so that when they sit on the front porch, they see your back door. At least that's usually been the rationale that I've understood. And I don't think you've really got that concern here for two reasons. Up here, this is the church property, so that's not a residential property. And then down here, you've got this unique ninety-degree bend in the road. So this is one of our lots here. So you don't have the, you know, this road doesn't extend in this fashion, which would put that home in, you know, someone's front yard, so to speak. So with that rationale, I would suggest to you that the setbacks are not a critical issue here. The only other thing I will add here is that, again, Commissioner Graham, the, as kind of unwillingly as the language in DPC four is, it is the Plano Focal Point language. That's what the Plano Focal Point in the comprehensive plan talks about when they talk about building materials, and that's why the applicant used it.
Okay, so at the risk of just being dense here, I'm not sure I understand completely the setback issue. So this property would be subject to setbacks, fifty-foot setback, correct?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five is the minimum.
Yeah, there's a twenty-five minimum front yard setback in RE.
Okay, and so what is the suggested minimum setback?
We had just pointed out that on, I guess, what would be the, if you're looking at the plan on the right side of Plano Rich Pond Road, that the existing homes that are nearest this development are at least a hundred feet from the front property line. So that was just one item we pointed out for your consideration. And if you would like to consider that as far as the character of the pattern of development that's already existing in that area. It's not that, that anytime we have a point to consider, that that means that they absolutely have to meet that. It's just, here we are, we're having a discussion this evening, the applicants trying, trying to present reasons why they didn't address that. And so that's for your consideration, and some of you may find that that's an acceptable answer, and some of you might still feel strongly that it should be at least a hundred. So it's really a judgment call on everyone's individual part.
Do we know, do we know what percentage of homes are, have that hundred-foot setback?
We just looked at the two homes that are nearest to this property. Once you keep going further south, just because of the curve in the road, it didn't really seem relevant because at that point, you're, the road is in a completely different location. And then there weren't really, I guess, you have another curve to the north, so we kind of just evaluated what was right on each end of the curve.
And if I may, folks, Rodney McGay, he stepped up and whispered in my ear a very good point that I don't want to get lost here. When we talk about front setbacks along Plano Rich Pond Road, we're only talking about two lots. And that is, if I can point them out, it's this lot that has an existing curb cut. and it's this lot right here. These other lots will face the internal streets, and they've committed to a buffer for those lots. There's a landscape buffer that will buffer the side facades of those other homes.
So that, that would be the side setback of those, correct?
Correct.
Well, it would still be a twenty-five-foot setback that's required.
Right.
It, because it has frontage along a public street, but, but functionally, if you're looking at the home on those lots, it would be the side.
The point I want to make, those will be buffered by the landscape buffer from the street view.
Okay.
It's in one of the DPCs.
And so, so Chris, um, you're, uh, I think your point is, topography limits you to some extent, correct?
It's a few points, that's one point. The loss of lots is another point that the applicant pointed out early on. The easement that tr- that traverses here is another issue. Uh, but I will tell you, Commissioner Graham, the biggest point I would make is the lack of an effect on the neighboring properties, because no one's looking out their front door and looking at a back door.
Yeah, I agree with that, because once you get inside the subdivision, that's the purpose of the setback. So if they're all twenty-five feet minimum, um, the, uh, now, I guess this is for your own development, this is for your own consideration, what if someone does a twenty-five-foot setback and their neighbor does a seventy-five-foot setback? Do you have a minimum rear setback, or, or?
The, there is no DPC for a minimum, and I don't, I do not believe, and let me look before I say this. Uh, having the unfortunate, uh, opportunity to serve on a HOA, a lot of times, minimum or maximum setbacks are more of an HOA issue than they are a development issue.
That's right, that's true. So, um, so in, from your client's perspective, they would be comfortable with a twenty-five-foot setback all the way through?
That, that's what's required by the zoning class they're asking for. So even without a DPC that says that, that will be the requirement on the development, because that's what RS1D require, or excuse me, RE, RE, residential estate requires. Correct. The minimum.
You, do you think, Chris, that they would actually use the minimum, or, or would your client be comfortable with a fifty-foot setback?
I can discuss that with, with Jody, and I'll, I'll reiterate, that's the first question I had for Rodney when I got involved in this.
I see, I see their issue, but if it's possible, I'd like to have a little more than twenty-five foot, and I think probably your client would like to have more than twenty-five feet. If we're talking about, we're talking about for the whole subdivision, correct? Or just these lots? Yeah, I'm, I'm saying for the whole subdivision.
Entire subdivision.
For the whole subdivision. Yeah, so if you've got a twenty-five-foot setback on a one-acre lot, you really do have the house pushed right up toward the front, and that may be their intent. There may be some terrain issues.
They also may have intended to address that indeed restrictions, or plat restrictions later.
I see, I see, okay. Uh, if you don't mind just have that discussion.
I will, I know there are a lot of.
It's not a deal killer for me, but it's something I'd, I'd be interested to know.
I know there are a lot of folks interested in this application, so I, I think I'll have time to talk about that.
All right, very good, thank you.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Davenport? Okay. Thank you, Chris. Uh, is there, we have some folks here tonight, is there, be- before we get started, hold on just a minute, uh, if you would raise your hand, are you in opposition to this request tonight? Okay, thank you very much, thank you all for being here. Do you all have one spokesperson for the group? Yes, sir, if you would come to the microphone, please. If you, if you would state your name and address, please, sir?
I'm Davenport, thirteen-eleven Plano Rich Pond Road, about a few hundred yards down from the, uh, property in question.
Mr. Davenport, you swear to tell the truth.
Swear to tell the truth. Mr. Chairman, I have a question about time constraints. What is our time constraint this evening?
We generally allow three minutes per, per person. If you are a representative for the, if you're the spokesperson for the entire group, we will give you, uh, adequate amount of time.
Appreciate that. Uh, I was prepared to say that we would request at least an additional five minutes.
That's fine.
Uh, my wife Tara had planned to speak, but she yields her time to me if there's no objection.
Yes, sir, so if you're speaking for the entire?
I am initially, but we are, each, we have four other people that are, that are going to speak as well.
So Mr. Davenport, just, uh, just, our, our, uh, policy is three minutes per person, so if we have five other people who want to speak, then we will, we will limit that to three minutes.
Exceptions? This is a very important issue, sir.
Yes, sir, I understand, and we're not, we're not trying to be difficult, but if, if, if there's eight people after, if you speak, and then there's four others, and then somebody else, we have to give everybody a chance to speak, and we want to do that. So let's, let's, let's compromise, you've got, you've got five, five minutes, okay?
Why don't we do that?
Five minutes.
All right. My family has owned the farm that we live on for over fifty years. Uh, my wife Tara owned and operated Plano, the old Plano Country Store for five years. We love this community and we love its people. We presented a petition to the commission with more than one hundred signatures, which you should have. Many are here tonight, and some have lived in this community much longer than I have. They all have serious concerns. The petition before you, uh, in, in the interest of time, I'm not going to read it verbatim, I would like to. But I would encourage you to please take the time to read that petition, four pages long. I don't see how in the world you can vote on this issue tonight without studying the petition and the issues that we raise. We note that one of the developers is Christian Volker, who we, I appreciate him recusing himself. He serves as a member of the commission, and we are confident that this will not be a conflict of interest due to his association with you, his friendship with you, or other members of the board. There are many more important issues than setbacks and vinyl facades and buffer zones. We're not concerned about those, we don't care. What we can, we're concerned about are four primary issues. Traffic, there was no traffic impact study done. None, I'll repeat that, no traffic impact study. We're concerned about environmental impact, we're concerned about schools, we're concerned about a cave which exists on lot number one, and the cave is formerly inhabited by paleo Native American Indians, and many, many artifacts and arrowheads have been found on this property and surrounding property. If anyone ever gets into excavation of this property, you're going to find cattle bones, you're going to find Native American bones, you're going to find, uh, what I'm going to mention, I'm putting the cart before the horse here, I planned to save this to last. But there are many restrictions on caves and Native American grounds. This is a bad and ill-conceived plan for a number of reasons. The only person I know in Plano that, that's excited about this plan, his name is Nick Patel, and he owns the new Plano Country Store. This would mean a lot of business for Nick, and he's a good man, but he's not, he, he's really excited about it. Uh, we think that this, the decision should not be based on checking boxes for compliance and existing codes and regulations and ordinances. It is about common sense and good judgment, it is about safety and environment and quality of life. The short-term and long-term effects would be detrimental to the safety of our residents and environmentally unsound. This land is not a Jago Levens Farm Development on flat terrain and straight metlock road. It is rolling hills, sinkholes, a cave, and wet weather ponds. It won't be another Mount Air Circle development with five-acre lots, nor a Santa Rosa, Florida beach community, if you're familiar with those. It's a high-density subdivision in the middle of a quiet suburban farming area. The four major issues are traffic, I mentioned, no impact study was known, environmental inta- impact, schools, and the cave and Native American lands. Now, I said I'm going to put the cart before the horse, because my time is limited, and I, this is probably the most important thing you're going to hear tonight. There's a gentleman named Mr. Charles Dewis of Franklin, Kentucky. He bought the land in question for a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in two thousand and one. Mr. Dewis owned one of the largest construction companies in the country. He moved dirt and built roads all over the US, and I say owned, because subsequently the company filed for bankruptcy. JAB, the developers, did not buy the land from Dewis, they paid one-point-one million dollars to the bankruptcy court. Dewis had planned to develop a subdivision similar to this one. He had all the necessary equipment, he built a beautiful farm fence, he painted it white, he built a large pond and filled up some sinkholes. When he later learned the complications involved in getting the land rezoned, he abandoned the project and began raising cattle. He also turned the land into a construction waste dump. Under cover of night, truckloads of material were dumped and covered by bulldozers the next day. Asphalt, concrete, other debris, asbestos. This is the reason why our farmers did not bid on the property at auction. They wouldn't touch it with a ten-foot pole. I reported this to Mr. James Hetty of your commission on several occasions. He assured me that someone had looked into the matter and found no violations. I wonder how many core samples were taken. In addition, the old homestead of the property was torn down, and instead of taking the debris to a landfill, it was dumped on the back of the property, it's still there. I won't comment further in a public forum on this matter, but if the chairman wishes, I would suggest a sidebar or private meeting sometime in the future.
All right, Mr. Davenport, you've got six minutes, sir.
All right.
Your closing comment, real quick.
Uh, closing comment. In summary, this is an ill-conceived plan, which would have a lasting detrimental effect on our community. We trust that the commission will use good judgment and common sense in evaluating this project. It is a decision which will affect many lives tomorrow and in future generations. Now, some of our members want to comment on the traffic?
Okay, well, all right, thank you, Mr. Davenport, if you'll take a seat, please. So, Mr. Davenport has done a good job, he's expressed about the traffic. Uh, the pictures have been shared with the commissioners, he's discussed the schools, he's discussed about the cave, and the environmental, uh, issues involved, and the Native American, um, whatever, Na- Native American, uh, history, artifacts, yes, thank you, Ben. Uh, just want to make sure that we, we heard you, sir, and, and then he also talked about the former owners and the potentially what is on the property. So we've discussed those, does anybody else have something else they would like to comment other than traffic, schools, cave, the environment, the Native Americans?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to talk about the traffic.
Uh, okay. Okay, we, we'll spend three minutes, yes, thank you, sir, yes, sir, we'll talk about the traffic. Your name and address, please?
My name is Philip Carter, I live at nine-eighty-five East Henry Gold Road.
East, what?
E- East Henry Gold Road, it's about a mile from this property.
Okay, thank you, sir, you swear to tell the truth.
Yes, sir.
All right.
I'm a retired transportation engineer, the biggest concern I have is the, uh, the Plano Rich Pond Road in this area is very hilly, and we have two hill crests that have zero site distance. The proof I have of that is Major Rex, one of them, my brother, that almost lost his life there, uh, one mile away from his home, and when he finally did get to come home, he come home in a wheelchair, partially paralyzed. Anyway, planning and zoning requirements for subdivision streets is a minimum of twenty-four feet of pavement. We have sixteen feet. Because of the site distance problems, we have a lot of people running out, off the road out there trying to dodge traffic because of the site distance problems, and I think if this is approved, Plano Rich Pond Road should be widened at least to the minimum standards of planning and zoning requirements for subdivision streets, just because of the safety issues. One other clarification, uh, one of the houses that's a hundred-feet setback is our parsonage, which is adjacent to this property, that, the Plano Baptist Church. There is a house there, and it probably does have at least a hundred-foot setback on it, but it makes any difference or not. One other thing, um, the water line on Plano Rich Pond Road is only a four-inch water line. I don't know where you can get, I don't think you can get adequate fire protection from a four-inch water line, but I just want to bring, bring that to your attention, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Thank you, sir, no, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we've heard, uh, any additional comments? We've talked about the water line and the site distance. Is there a different, something different that is not been mentioned? Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am, your name and address, please?
Anchored Cartwright, I live six-seven-seven Plano Rich Pond Road, so right across the street from, um,
You swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I do, and I agree with everything Mr. Davenport said, and unfortunately, I wasn't in the group that came together with that, but my concerns echo his exactly, and I'm sorry I'm not bringing up new points, but to give you an sort of adjacent perspective, I've, I'm a professor at WKU, I teach art history, and I'd sort of been collecting rocks around my property for years, and thinking, gosh, they look really similar, they look really interesting, and I've amassed thousands of them in my, in my shed, and, and I've been in contact with the Kentucky Archaeological Survey, and this is really a remarkable area. This, this, I'm at a low point in between two crests of the hills, where there's a lot of erosion from the water that comes down, you know, when it rains here, it rains like insanely, and it all pours down into my property, and so that exposes artifacts every day. And I've studied these, I mean, I'm not an archaeology, archaeolo- archaeologist, but I'm trained in art, and I've studied these and researched them, and they do. They, this is a remarkable place that seems to have been either a, a major civilization in this little place with this massive cave that's right on this property, um, which isn't included in the report, by the way, but it's a, a place that really, I think, we can't go forward with even considering widening the road before we have the Kentucky Ar- Archaeological Survey do a proper study and, and check out everything that's, that's there, because you can see, just driving by this property of the field, like, all the, all the big red rocks that stick out, I know what they are now. Like, I used to think they were just rocks, and, and they're not. So, there, the cave goes underneath the road at that point, too, by the way. It goes across the pro- goes, you know, from that side of the road across to mine. My, my wonderful neighbors, the Thomases, they told me stories about calves wandering into the, the cave opening on their side and showing up on the other side. So I have major concerns about widening the road, the amount of traffic, especially since we're, we're talking about a new exit that's going to be bringing in more people from the highway. And, um, it is already, it's such a dangerous spot, like, he said, you know, it's, there are two little kind of crests, right as you, right before the church and right after this property, and I'm at the low point, and people turn, and then they speed up. And my dog was killed there, broke my heart, and the church is there, and I know they've had break-ins, like, in, in the past.
Okay, all right, so, all right, thank you.
There's a lot of stuff.
Okay, thank you, so.
Thanks.
I, I see some other hands, but let's, let's just make sure we've covered the environment. We're not trying to limit anybody, but if there's something different that has not been, something different, uh, we, we will be glad to hear it. Yes, ma'am, your name and address?
My name is Diana Freeman Ankle. You have to excuse me for a minute.
Your address, please?
This is, my address is three-fifty-four Marble Gates Circle, Alveton, Kentucky.
You swear to tell the truth?
I swear to tell the truth.
Okay, and your comment, please?
My comment, it may overlap a little bit. I, uh, was a teacher at Plano the first four years that that school opened. Um, I grew up in the Plano community, my grandfather was the doctor there from nineteen-hundred to the early seventies. Uh, during, and my grandmother was born in Plano in eighteen-eighty, and was part, her, she is the descendant of Bill Kelly, and if you look over across the street, you'll see, uh, his name on the marker there.
Okay, so.
Two things, as a teacher at Plano Elementary, uh, I am well aware of the traffic conditions on Plano Road already with the school. At the time I retired from teaching after thirty-eight years, there, uh, was massive issues with that road. The, the school itself now is at capacity. Be- be- behind the school, between the school and the playground is an area that would be basically the only area that could be added on to. There is a huge sinkhole that's fenced off. And as a teacher, I took my kids out every day for recess. There is a small hill going from that sunken area where the sinkhole is. Uh, it had misted rain that morning, so I did not take my kids to do their usual job of picking up trash in that grassy area. A few minutes later, we were on the playground.
Yes, ma'am.
And there was another sinkhole fell in. My point is, the whole area out there is full of sinkholes and caves. The cave system that's under this subdivision has multiple caverns that are huge. At one point during the Civil War, Salt Peter was mined from there to use for gunpowder during the Civil War.
Okay, so what, I'm just going, I'm, I want to be respectful of you. What does that have to do about Plano School with this?
Plano School, the traffic, this subdivision, the traffic on Plano Road is already horrible. Plano Ridge Pond Road, and it doesn't show you in there, they talked about one curve. There are two curves. You've got the double curve on this end, and up by the church is another ninety-degree curve that historically has had people coming up the top of the hill and crashing in because they've crashed into trees and stuff at the top. It is a major traffic issue.
Okay, all right. Ms. Ben, you've had your three minutes, okay? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, if there's, we're, we're trying to be respectful, but we've, I think we've hit the traffic. We've hit the environment. We've, we've, is there something totally different that we have not covered? We, we want to be respectful and.
May I ask a question?
Well, no, is there, let me just say this. We, we, we'll stay here as long as we need to. We're not trying to cut somebody off, but I think we've heard, and y'all have done a very good job about the issues that have been expressed. Is there something different that you would?
May I ask a question?
All right, you come to the microphone, please. And your name and address, please.
My name is Lisa Carson. My address is two oh seven Potique Drive.
You swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Uh, the question I had is, I know you don't want to hear traffic, traffic, but we can all attest to different aspects of that traffic. Just like one of the first cases, they kept addressing the one-lane street, and I understand that. But e- even though it was the same issue, they both got to speak to that. I know there's a few others, but, I mean, Mr. Davenport, together with us, we had had a meeting. He put together a great petition here with all the stuff on it. Like she was saying with the Plano School, you hear traffic. But what, what, what you haven't heard yet with the Plano School traffic alone is it can be backed up for over a quarter of a mile, both sides of the street, multiple times a day. Emergency vehicles cannot even get through there, much less on this little single, you know, super, super, um, narrow road as well. There is heavy, heavy farm, uh, vehicle traffic on that road. We're talking half-million-dollar tractors and combines, cultivators, grain trucks, other equipment travel, not to mention trash trucks, postal service, our school buses. That's another concern with the school buses and this huge, big subdivision is the school buses are not even coming into our subdivisions now. I don't know if it's a lack of drivers, what it is. All the children are expected, rain, shine, whatever it is. They, I mean, that's a, that's another safety issue in itself, having to, you know. Then you've also got, you know, like with the caves and other stuff.
Okay, okay, so I, yes, ma'am, okay.
Wildlife displacement, there are multiple, I couldn't tell you how many packs of coyotes and all that, you know. There's a safety concern with that. They're going to be eating their children, their dogs. You know, not to mention it's going to be going everywhere else. The, you know, the water rain off, or the runoff and everything. Like he said, you know, with, um, illegal dumping and all that stuff that's never been.
Okay, yes, ma'am, thank you. I think we've, I think we've covered all these.
But you have the historical, the cultural, and the natural resource preservation, um, the state and tribal historic preservation.
All right, yes, ma'am, you've had your three minutes. And I think we've covered, what, just, just a minute. We, th- there's got to be something different. We want to hear you all, but we, we've got, we don't need to keep, yes, ma'am, you can have your seat. We don't need to keep repeating the same things. We're trying to be fair to everybody, okay? I- is there something different?
I think so.
Okay, yes, ma'am, your name and address, please.
Anchor Carter, nine eighty-five East Henry Gold Road.
Okay.
But also own property across from the church. Uh, two concerns, one, uh, the Freeman Park, if you look on the website, there's two bike routes that go that road. So, there's a twenty-one mile and a, or twenty, sixteen-point-one mile. So bikers use that road. Uh, it's used quite a bit from the parks, so that is safety. Uh, the other thing is the flooding in front of the parsonage. That road tends to flood with the, uh, runoff from all the septic, lateral lines. Uh, it's either going to go into the caves. And if it goes under the cave system, then there's a possibility that the Plano Cemetery is right on the other side of the church. Uh, we've already had one sinkhole fall in twenty years ago and lost three caskets. Um, if, uh, that's a possibility of the water being changed and causing that cemetery. The other thing is the cemetery is right on the road. So, if they widen the road, I'm not sure what, uh, we have plots right there on the edge, so that, that would be another concern, how you would handle that.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, I think, yes, ma'am, is there something different?
I, I just want to speak to some of the historical aspect of it because I have personal knowledge of the cave that I don't see up there.
Well, I think we have, I, I think in, in the, the well-written petition that we have talked about the cave, we've just, we have talked about the tractors, the combines, we've talked about postal, we've talked about joggers, bikers. We've talked, we've heard about the environmental, the caves. I, I think we've heard enough on that for, for, for tonight. I, I mean, is there something totally di- I mean, uh, uh, there's caves, there's sinkholes, and the, the developers have to mitigate that. I'm sorry?
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am, you've got, you've got three minutes.
My name is Judy Freeman Schwanke. I promise to tell the truth.
Okay.
I, as a child, I was in that cave on the Coley, what, what, we always called the Coley Farm, which was this property that you're talking about here. A huge cave. I can remember sitting in there under the roots of a huge tree with my flashlight or with my candles because it was a nice, cool place to go. It is a huge cave system. You want to put sixty-plus houses, all of them with septic tanks over a major cave environment. I think that the people that paid the one point one million dollars for that property knew they were going to have problems putting in that high-density housing. My understanding for, that the planning and zoning, when I went down there a couple of years ago, was that it was supposed to be low-density housing was the plan for that area when it actually ever was, had housing come in. I'm not against progress. I own the property right next door, behind Plano Baptist Church and facing the Plano Ridge Pond Road. I'm also one of the owners of the property, along with my sister, of the property across from it. I think that the, the environmental impact has to be studied if you're going to put that many septic tanks in that area. If not, and, and I'm also, and I'm telling you right now, I intend to go forward with the American Indian history and notify probably the Shawnee Nation this week.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I think, ma'am, is there something different? Now, now, wait a minute, wait a minute. Sir, you've already, Mr. Davenport, you've already spoken. Is there something totally different?
It's totally different.
Come, come up to the microphone. This is our last, this is our last, okay.
Great House Crossland at forty eighty-three Plano Road.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Swear to tell the truth. And my question is just very simple. Um, my mother owns part of the property that's at forty eighty-three that joins the back, and we're just wondering if we can get a privacy fence if this goes through because it's farmland that my mother owns. And when you put a major subdivision in, we all know people like to get their kids four-wheelers, um, dirt bikes, and they have no place to ride them. And for safety purposes, we would like to know that, you know, that we're going to be protected along with other people. And if you, and if it pulls up, you'll see that our land joins that.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, okay. Uh, Mr. Davenport, if you would come to the microphone, please. You've, you have, um, heard the comments, uh, you've given your report. Is there anything else that you would like to add? You heard the, the request about a privacy fence?
There, there are, uh, Chair Warren, let me first start with, uh, what seems like a while ago, when I was up here, we talked about the hundred-foot setbacks on the homes that are accessing, um, Plano Ridge Pond Road. So, I've talked to Mr. McGahey, and I've talked to, uh, Mr. Allen, and I'm going to suggest a sentence at the end of number twelve, D P C number twelve, which would read, "Any lot with direct access upon Plano Ridge Pond Road shall include a minimum, uh, front building setback of fifty feet." Now, Commissioner Graham, that does not change the minimum throughout the development. And, and my response to that is, when I talk to Rodney, the drainage easements and how they're planning to handle that are primarily going to be in the back of the lots. So, as you push homes, it, it compromises that plan. So, he encouraged me not to do that.
I'm okay with that. Once you get inside the subdivision, then you, you guys are mitigating your own, your own issues there.
Correct, so what that means is, any lot that's adjoining, uh, Plano Ridge Pond Road will either have a fifty-front setback, or it will have that landscape buffer because some of those lots will have side setbacks that will be buffered. And I think one other change, at the end of number four. No, I already made that one. I think I made the one about the variation, the facades, when I was up here earlier.
Mr. Davenport, while you have your engineer here for the people in the audience, would you call him up here to explain how the water is handled within that development?
Sure, Rodney, could you do that, please? And then I'll have a few other points to address some of their concerns. And I think that's all I have to say.
Rodney McGahey, twenty fifty-three Die Ford Road.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
And your, and your profession, sir?
I'm a professional engineer and a professional land surveyor.
Okay, and there were some questions raised in the audience tonight about the environment and the water and sinkholes and caves. So, would you address that to the folks in the audience tonight and what you're, what you all do? In fact, would you, if you would, take them one at a time. Let's address, let's address what, retention and drain off, and then sinkholes and etc. I think you can hit them all pretty much.
Absolutely. So, I heard some comments about stuff being buried on the property, which would probably be in a sinkhole location or something like that.
Necessarily.
Or wherever, um, but one, one of the things.
All over the property, seventy-one acre.
Okay, one of the things required, uh, when, by the subdivision regulations is when we do in a development, if there's an existing sinkhole, um, it has to be, uh, protected, cleaned out if the grade changes. So, all of that stuff, if it's in a sinkhole, if it's exposed, you mentioned something about one of the buildings being torn down by the previous owner and put somewhere, um, all of that stuff will be removed and cleaned up and, and gotten rid of off of the property. So, that, so that's one issue. Any existing sinkhole on the property, or sinkhole that develops on the property during construction process, will have to be mitigated in accordance with the Warren County subdivision regulations. So, there, uh, there are lots of different things that we have to do, um, to protect them so that the water, uh, the groundwater can continue to fluctuate during, uh, heavy rain events. Um, so, so there's a lot of things that go into that, filter fabric and stone and, and outlet structures and, and a lot of those things that go into that. The, uh, someone mentioned, uh, something about, uh, I believe this gentleman here, about traffic, right? Okay, the county engineer has reviewed this application. Uh, he has required that they widen the road, okay, to the county standard, since we're in the county.
What is the county standard?
It is eighteen feet.
About eight.
Up to, uh, this, this, you're going to get that?
Yeah, just talk, talk about the water.
Okay, okay. The other thing is, uh, we understand that there's a lot of low areas on this property. Uh, it, it, that's, it's Warren County. I, I don't, you know, that's just the, what happens around here. In, in most areas, there's a lot of up and down, okay? Um, and majority of the time, that's what people want for a residential building lot. They don't want a lot that's flat because lots that are flat, they flood very easily. Uh, so if you, with a property like this that has multiple lower locations where we can put drainage here, and drainage here, and drainage here, it doesn't, uh, concentrate all of the water. It takes it to the exact same place it's going now. Uh, so it's, it's a lot easier to manage that on a property that is rolling. Like, if you've been in, uh, Fairview Farms or any of those subdivisions, the houses look different because they have more character because they're, it, it's lower and then it's higher and it's lower. So, it, it creates a better atmosphere, uh, for, for the tenants or anyone driving through there.
So, Rodney, would it be fair to say that, uh, on this plat that you have before us, there are no drainage easements, but of course, there will be drainage easements, is that correct?
That's correct. We are responsible for, uh, retaining any increase in drainage from what the property exists right now to, to full development. That's, uh, and R E allows up to thirty percent impervious. Uh, so those basins will be established prior to any buildings, and I'm not sure that, that there's probably not an R E lot out there that has thirty percent coverage. That's a lot of coverage for one acre lot.
So, for the benefit of all the people in this audience, if we approve this, they don't just get a license to go out there and put exactly this in, right? They've got, so they have to meet all of these criteria that you're referring to.
That's right, there's a, there's a review process where everything has to be reviewed by the county engineers, by the planning commission, uh, all the utility companies. Someone mentioned something about water. All of that has to go through Warren County Water District. If there's not the, uh, adequate fire protection for this property, it can't be built.
Right, and so, so we, we address the, the, the size of the water line, all of those things that have come up here. Those will come after this meeting, is correct? Okay, and, and so, from your perspective, uh, also drainage and retention will come after this meeting, correct? All right, very good, thank you. After this meeting and also prior to development. That is correct, prior to development, that is correct, okay. All right, thank you. Chris, you, you, did you want to address the, a couple of other points? Thank you, Rodney. Quick?
There was a request from, um, this.
I just have a question. Can you show me on that property where the major entrance to the cave control?
Okay, uh, let me, in this area right here, there is a spring.
Where, what area?
Uh, it's, it's right in here on the, yeah, right there where he's got.
I can see your cursor moving.
Okay, so there is a, uh, if I had, if I could show you the topography of this, of this property, there's a low area there, uh, that's considerably lower than the rest of the property. And there's a spring and the, the opening that everyone keeps talking about.
That is not, that is not where the big cave is. And I spent half, a lot of my childhood.
Okay.
It's up higher where you have a road going through because somebody has filled all that in.
Okay.
So, how are you going to find that?
So, whenever, uh, we start looking at, we'll have to, to take soil samples. There'll have to be a lot of geotechnical stuff that goes on, uh, this, that the county will not allow us to build a road over top of a sinkhole. So, there's a lot of things that go on like that.
Are you going to ask any of us that know about that, where we?
I would be happy to learn where, where exactly that is because I can't, I have, I don't have that prior knowledge. I just, I know that there is a spring and an opening on that lot, and that's why, that's exactly why that lot is configured in the shape that it is, to keep it all on one property.
It looks to me like, you see, you have the, the road coming up and curving around it. You have a, a small road, it looks like, parallel to that electrical thing?
Yes, we're required.
What is that for?
We're required by the subdivision regulations and the, and the zoning ordinance to stub in any property that is larger than ten acres.
Now, that's my property.
And there, I, I understand, and if, uh, I'm, can you all still do that, Ben? Where if, if she doesn't want to stub, she doesn't have to have one?
I thought we couldn't take the stubs out.
I, I'm just asking.
I've got one in the back. About one over there.
That's why you see all of the stub streets. That's why you see all of the sub streets. All of those properties where there are sub streets, they're larger than ten acres.
I already have a problem there, because my land is, or our land is way down and way up. We have problems just keeping the kids that are already in that neighborhood out of the cemetery and off of our property, because they go, as soon as it snows, they're all sled, sledding down the hills into the, the sinkhole. I have a huge sinkhole on our property, too. But I can tell you that putting that many more children in that area is going to be very harmful to the church, and very harmful to my property and the property that I own part of next to Freeman Park. Um, and, but my major concern by far, by far, is sixty-plus septic tanks in that area. Why don't they put, how far on Plano Road does the septic system, does the sewer system come?
So the sewer system stops well before you get to the Plano store.
Okay.
Um, that, we're not within the range of, uh, existing sewer infrastructure. Uh, but I will say that the health department has to inspect each lot before, prior to issuing a permit, uh, for a septic system.
And how often do they say, "No, you can't do it"?
I'm, I'm not sure, ma'am.
All right, okay.
I'm, I'm really concerned about the affluent and the environmental impact of sixty houses, especially when we were told before that it was for low-density housing, not high-density housing.
Okay, all right.
So many limitations to low, low density.
Okay, yes ma'am, thank you very much. Okay.
I can speak to the density. This is considered, uh, uh, an area, uh, by the comp plan is rural density residential, and that allows a density up to one dwelling unit per acre. The proposed density is zero-point-nine-one dwelling units per acre. This is not considered a high-density residential development.
With the streets, okay. Thank you, Rodney. All right, Chris, if you will come up and make, make just a brief final point or two.
They've discussed almost everything I was going to highlight. The, the major one being this is a low-density development, this is residential.
Okay, talk about the road.
So if you look in your DPC number, uh, seventeen, the gentleman that talked about the site distance, that was a good point. Uh, when the, when the, uh, traffic folks told us what we, they wanted us to do, and they were going to require us to do, we have to widen the road, we have to resurface the road. And although we are showing our access points where we hope them to be, we also still have to get site distance permissions from them.
Chris, if I interrupt, may I interrupt you just for a moment?
Sure.
One of the, one of the gentlemen earlier said that there was no traffic study. You're telling me that you've, you've consulted, you had to consult with engineers in order to get approval for this?
Correct. So, uh, ten years ago, five years ago, the comp plan may have required us to do a traffic study. I'm not sure they would have on this. But the, the, the policy and the procedure for a number of years now has been, we submit these applications to the transportation authority, they tell us what they're going to require us to do. And the, the phrase I like to use is, is they make us build the church for Easter. When they tell us, "We want you to do X, Y, or Z," it's to not, it's basically the w- w- the worst-case scenario, what a traffic study would tell us to do.
So the traffic engineers are the ones that make these, make these requirements?
Correct. We don't get to pick on what are improvements. Uh, I'm sure, uh, the developers would rather not have to widen the road and not resurface the road and redo the ditches and all those things, but that's what the folks at the transportation cabinet or the county, the applicable agency said we had to do here.
Same, thank you.
Uh, a- a- and with that, I think that addresses the, the concerns I have.
Is there, Hamp, do we have the DPC changes and the applicant, uh, is here to agree to those?
Chris, why don't you ask, uh, Mr. Allen? There he is, he just materialized. Ask him to, uh, agree to the changes you proposed.
Mr. Allen, Mr. Allen, will you swear your in, please, sir? Swear your in?
Yes, sir.
Your name and address.
I'm sorry, Jody How, eleven-thirty-one Fairview Avenue.
All right, swear to tell two.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jody.
Mr. Allen, do you agree that the front facades of development shall be varied among homes in the same block?
Yes, sir.
And do you agree that any lot with direct access upon Plano Rich Pond Road shall include a minimum fifty-foot front building setback?
Yes, sir.
I think that was it, Hamp.
Agree to, to remove the language encompassing ten lots or more?
Yes. So, uh, number four would read, Mr. Allen, "All residences within this development will be constructed of stone, brick, Eiffis, hardy board siding, LP smart siding, vinyl siding, or other modern masonry material. No more than thirty percent of the residents within the development," I guess, shall, it should say, "shall have."
Right.
"Shall have a front facade constructed of a hundred percent vinyl. Front facade shall be varied among homes in the same block." Do you agree to that language?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many lots are, are on Plano Rich Pond Road?
There's two. Is that correct?
Two with direct access.
Two with direct access, okay. Thank you. Our, our comments are, are over with. We appreciate everybody, it, no ma'am, no, no ma'am, we're, we're, no, no ma'am, we're, 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 we've given everybody?
Well, it's, 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 it's like, like.
No ma'am, we're, we're, okay, thank you, ma'am. Th- thank you very mu-
I'm driving the road.
Okay, thank you very much, uh.
I think it's very, it's, a lot of, I was, I was, I was, I was.
Yes, ma'am, we, we, we have, we.
A lot, that person's been, probably lined, lined in the road.
Okay, thank.
Something you think we're talking about.
Okay, well, ma'am, here's, here's the thing. Whatever the vote is here tonight, for everybody sitting here, this, this is a, a, we have a professional staff here, and this is a citizen board. And if this project is approved tonight, or if it's, if it's denied, you all have the opportunity to go to Warren County Fiscal Court. The, th- this is not a final decision. This is a recommendation from the Warren County Planning Commission and their professional staff, and it, this will go to the Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. So if this, whatever the decision is here tonight, does not suit you all, you have the opportunity, as citizens of Warren County, to be at the Warren County, and you will be notified to be at the Warren County. Correction, I don't think they get a notification. Well, it will be in the newspaper, correct?
It's just placed on there as in the.
It's placed on, but you can look up Warren County Fiscal Court on the internet, on the internet, and they will, they publish their meetings, just like this was published tonight, when this, this potential hearing would be. And you, as citizens, or any of us as citizens, have the right to go to that meeting to express your opinions to the magistrates and the county judge about this. So this is not, just FYI, this is not, this is a, the planning board, the plan, the, this is, whatever the recommendation here is tonight, is a recommendation, and then it goes to Warren County Fiscal Court for approval or denial. So, is that, am I saying that right, Ben? Okay.
And for purposes, for purposes of the record, Ms. Cartwright, Dr. Cartwright, has already spoken to you once tonight.
Right.
Uh, nobody has.
Thank you, and I just, I just wanted to add that legal point, I'm sorry to.
It's okay, thank you very much. So, okay. So I think we've, we've, you, appreciate you all being here tonight. Commissioners, would call for a, uh, motion on this recommendation, please.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment to be, with the condition upon the general development plan, docket number twenty-twenty-three forty-two Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus twenty-thirty comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the object, objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion includes summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Drain.
Yes.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, the recommendation goes to Warren County Fiscal Court for final approval. So thank you all for being here tonight.
I will, I will, Mr. Warren, says, Mr. It seems, oh, that we just.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our, our next item tonight is twenty-twenty-three, twen- tw- twenty-twenty-three forty-three Z County. Okay, we've got some other business to conduct, if you all want to go outside and discuss this.
Friday, we're getting out the door.
Okay, our next item tonight is twenty-twenty-three forty-three Z County. Hey, Jody? Jody?
Our next item is twenty-twenty-three forty-three Z County Hammer Rental Homes LLC, Royal Investments BG LLC, and Greenbrier Hills Property LLC. The owners and the City County Planning Commission, the applicant, have filed an application to rezone a portion of tract's land containing approximately nine-tenths of an, point nine, nine-tenths of an acre located zero in four-eighty-seven Valley Point Court from RS-one-A Single Family Residential to RS-one-D Single Family Residential. So does this?
This is a split zoning application. You, you've seen a few of these. We, we don't really have a formal staff presentation. It's, it's simply cleaning up a sliver of, uh, split-zoned land, so. Happy to answer any questions, though.
We do need a motion. Thank you, Rachel.
And if you'd let the record reflect that there's no one else here who wants to be heard.
Oh, excuse me, Hamp. Is there anyone in this audience tonight has opposition to this request? Jody, you got any opposition?
No, sir.
All right. We call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, docket number twenty-twenty-three forty-three Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus twenty-thirty comp plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report.